3:36 PM, let the record reflect city council special meeting for Tuesday, June 16, 2020 has begun in council chambers of City Hall. Once again, in light of a COVID-19 situation, the chambers are still closed off to the public, but the public can still call in and participate in citizens communications by calling 773-1111 and asking for Imelda Rodriguez or send an email to Ms. Imelda Rodriguez or City Secretary@eaglepasstx.us. This time we'll have to take establishment accord with all members of council being present. This time also take a moment of reverence for all those serving our country at home and abroad and our first responders who continue to put themselves in the front lines with this COVID-19 epidemic, but we ask you to keep them in your thoughts. At the time, citizens communications and recognitions, do we have any?
None submitted, ma'am.
None submitted? Alrighty. Thank you. And those of you that are watching at home, when we go to executive session, Chief Cardona and Denise Namath and Polo Vialma will be giving out the latest numbers on COVID-19. Good news is, we had two positive cases registered today, but one of them is actually from out of town and that community is being notified to keep track of that individual. So, we're up to 200, that's the latest I got locally, that one extra one, we're not accounting for our community. Alright, moving on to resolutions, item number one, consideration possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas allocating funds to create business recovery programs for businesses who are negatively affected by COVID-19. And I'm going to ask to take this one out of order and it's not going to be, I don't know if anybody has legal questions to ask the executive session, I just want to bring it back later so we can get through the other items and the presentation, you can take all the rest of the evening, Arturo. Alright? So that's okay with everybody? We'll bring it back at the end. Do we have to table it for later or we're good like that? Alright, going on to item number two, consideration and possible approval of a resolution accepting the Major League Baseball Youth Foundation grant, agreeing to the purchasing requirements and allocating matching funds from the Parkland Dedication Fund.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This resolution is asking for authorization to accept the grant award that the city manager actually announced a couple of meetings ago from the Major League Baseball Youth Foundation. And so the total grant was for $49,600. What makes this grant a little different from other grants, because normally we receive grants from other government agencies, the state government or the federal government. So there's certain requirements to, in order to receive this grant. One of them is that we have to use a specific vendor. So in this case, we're committing to using Musco Sports Lighting LLC, which is the vendor we tend to use for our sports lighting, but usually a grant does not require a vendor. We usually go through the bidding process, find, so in order to accept this grant, we have to commit to using Musco Sports Lighting, which we have no issue with.
And that would not be a violation for us to go that route?
Because it is a condition of the grant.
Okay.
It should not be an issue. I don't know if we want to, if you have a legal question for Eddie?
Okay, legal chime, ma'am.
But normally whenever there are requirements that require a specific piece of equipment that's only available from one source, then there's a sole source exemption. So that's the direction that we feel that this would go in.
Eddie, did you get that?
Yes.
Are we, are we, Jesse's correct, we've worked on this before on the sole source. Alrighty.
The other item that we need, that we included in the resolution, so the total cost, let me back up a little bit, so the total cost is expected to be $119,950. Again, the grant is for $49,600, so the city will need to cover $70,350. And the recommendation is to use Parkland Dedication funding. So Parkland Dedication funding is the funding that we receive through the planning department for when new subdivisions or new construction is going on. So these fees are supposed to be used for park improvements, and so we feel this is an adequate use of that funding. As of right now, there's roughly about $380,000 in that fund, so we would be using $70,350. And so the recommendation is to approve the resolution.
Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Vialpando.
Second.
Second by Councilman Salinas. Any further questions for Jesse? Nambien, take it to vote, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Going on to item number three, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, authorizing the Friends of Eagle Pass Inc. to manage the Fourth of July event.
I forgot that one was mine, too. So this is a recommendation, as you mentioned, to authorize the Friends of Eagle Pass Inc. to manage the Fourth of July event. This event's going to be very different from other events, and I know we're going to get into the details in the upcoming week or so, but there are some items that we would like to discuss in the executive session with this, but then we'll come back and explain more after executive session.
So, you want us to table, table for executive session?
Correct.
We're going to discuss this in executive session, is what you said?
Yes.
Okay. Motion at table, motion made at table for executive session by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilman Vialpando. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Going on to other business, item number four, discussion and possible action on the quarterly investment report. Jesse, don't sit down, Jess, you got the next one, too. And the next one.
That's what I get for not having the agenda with me.
There you go.
Okay. So in just a minute, I'll hand out the actual formal report. The formal report's a little bit more detailed, but I just want to go over the summary, first of all. So what we're reporting here is the second quarter of fiscal year 2020. As per the Public Investment Act, we are required to come before council after each quarter is complete and reconciled to show you what happened during that quarter with our investments. So just to recap, with the Public Investment Act, we use city funds, existing funds, invest them into either interest-bearing checking accounts, certificates of deposit, CDs, pools, things that are very, very safe. You know, we do not ever invest in the stock market or things that are very volatile. Not to say that there's no risk, but the risk is very, very, very low. And so during this pandemic, we have seen interest rates fall. And so one number that I did want to point out is the total interest earned, 182,000. You know, it's a relatively high number in terms of interest earned for the three-month period, however, it is about 70,000 lower than the previous quarter. And so in March, we did see a significant decline. And so just to summarize what this shows, it shows on the first, the first column that we started with $55 million. $50 million were in cash and 5,000 were in our tax pool account. And tax pool is basically several governments who put money in a pool and that pool is invested, and then the interest is divided amongst all the participants on a pro rata basis. And so we ended with 45 million in cash and 5 million in tax pool. So we dropped from 55 million to 50 million, but that's mostly because of our expenditures on our projects. Most of that, I can tell you, is from sports complex, the payments that were made during the quarter. So again, the amount of interest earned was 182,000. I wanted to point this out, this we don't typically show in the quarterly reports, but I wanted to show for comparison purposes, for quarter number four in 2019, which is June to September, we were making almost 300,000 total in interest. In quarter one, just over 200,000. In quarter two of 2020, just under 200,000. And quarter three, where we are now, we're expected to make just under 50,000. So we are seeing the effects of the drop in interest rates. Again, this is all funds, so this includes capital funds. When I switch to the general fund, we're talking tens of thousands, you know, because most of the cash that we do have is for construction projects. So this is what affects our budget. And so quarter four of 2019, just under 35. Quarter one of 2020, just over 30. Quarter two of 2020, we had just about 16,000, and we're expected just under 5,000 in quarter four. So there we will have a significant drop in our operating budget for the general fund.
Do you anticipate it'll go down for the fourth quarter also, or?
It's going to level off. It's going to level off. And so most of, when the pandemic started, it's all about security, and so you try to become as liquid as possible so you have the cash to operate. And so our big concern is what's the interest rate in the bank going to fall to? We just renegotiated that amount, and so we've hit the bottom. And so the only place to go is up from here. So, you know, we hope things get better, but it's not going to go lower.
Without being political, also considering that it is, it's an election year, there is always volatility in the market, so.
Yeah. But there are signs of the market going up.
Yes. Correct. And so the thing is, is that since we are not allowed to invest in high-risk investments, it tends to work against us because those low-risk investments seem to have a quick drop, but the recovery takes longer than high-risk investments. So, you know, this is unfortunately, it's understandable why those are our requirements because you don't want to risk public funds. But the good news is, you know, when the market crashed, we don't lose money, we just make less revenue.
Yeah.
This is additional income. This isn't money, oh, we lost money. No, we didn't lose money, we're just going to receive less income than we expected. Let me. So this is the actual formal investment report. Again, this is for information only, there's really nothing we can change, just to report what already occurred. But at any point, if you have any questions regarding any of these. Just let us know and we'll get you that information as soon as we can.
Where do we put the money once, like, the interest earned? We just put it in our operating account? How does that work?
Yeah, it goes to the general fund. So for, when we talk about the majority of our interest, it does go to our capital projects, which is a really good thing because, you know, we borrowed $30 million. So we invested and we were able to make, I believe, $800,000 additional, so that income goes to more projects.
Right.
For the general fund, it just goes into the budget, whether it's for salaries or supplies. Like I said, it's a smaller amount, you're talking tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands, but it does go to help our budget. And that concludes the report. Any questions?
Does there actually need to be taken on it?
Yes. You need to accept the information.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon. No further questions? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. One more, Jess, discussion and possible action on section 26, no, sorry, sorry, question number five, number five, consideration and possible approval of a change order number two for the City of Eagle Pass sports complex.
That's actually not mine. That's Vanessa.
Vanessa?
I thought it would be Vanessa, but.
Change order number.
Fan team.
I know, he leaves the bad stuff to me. Anyway, so this is change order two for the sports complex, and I know, I believe it was Mayor and maybe Mr. Antuna, they were on side with the parks director. There was a couple of things that were being considered. As you all know, the sports complex is coming along, it looks beautiful, the turf fields really do look gorgeous, especially when you see them up close and personal. One of the things that we requested as part of a proposal from Hellas, who's our contractor, was adding the City of Eagle Pass logo on the center of the football field and also adding 12 logos on all of the softball and baseball fields on the deck circle. And so they did provide cost for that. In addition to that, we also asked for a proposal to add backlighting to the letters as you come in to the sports complex. And so as part of those three proposals, we do have the cost there in your package, and the total for all of those requests would be $41,126. And so the request is for council to consider that and approve the change order.
And this is for the logos, for the logos in all the fields and the lights, is that what you said?
Yes. Yes.
The center of the football field just has big, I mean, it makes sense to have it. And the diagram we had seen actually had the logo, but it had not been included in the project.
Right, it was renditioned, right.
And when we went out there, that was one thing that was, I think George brought it up, eh, be nice to see the logo on our batter boxes and on the center, and I agreed, we went out there and it's blank.
I bet it was included, to be honest with you.
So that's what I was going to ask.
It wasn't.
So this was not included in the original proposal at all?
It was not, we actually went back to the actual proposal, because in one of the renderings it was, but the actual contract documents, what it did include was Eagle Pass on the end field. And so that is included and it's right there right now, but when we looked at the actual documents, it did not include the circle in the middle. And so we went back, we asked for renderings, we asked for proposals, and that's why we're coming before you now.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Anybody have further questions? Did you have a question? Alright, we'll take it to a vote, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item number six, discussion and possible action on section 26-138 pertaining to parking meter fees for downtown. I'm going to bring it up, Jess? Alright. I had a conversation with administration, Mr. Antuna and Jesse and Ivan Morua. Look, we're not getting a lot of traffic downtown, and I know it's not because of the parking meter fees, but we do realize there's a lot of still meters that are still down, and I know we're working on a plan to upgrade our parking meter system. And so what I was asking the administration of it was something we can discuss, to not charge on the parking meters within the downtown area. I'm not talking about the parking lot, I'm talking specifically the downtown Main Street commercial area, you know, all that area where, I mean, our businesses are hurting. And if this will make one more person go downtown, knowing that they don't have to pay a quarter of 50 cents to park, I mean, it's not a lot, there's not a lot of revenue coming in from there anyways right now. So I was asking the council, the administration to consider, and the council to consider, you know, waiving all fees for now, and I don't know how we're going to do it, George, are we just going to tape them off, or?
But is this just for?
Permanent?
To prevent.
No, 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 it's a temporary thing. It's a temporary thing.
Until further notice.
Yeah, it would definitely have to be temporary because we do have an ordinance in play.
Yeah, I don't want to change the ordinance, I just, you know, for administration.
Moratorium, sort of. At the same time, it helps us study the way we can start working on the new system.
And the new system.
Because these meters, and I've told all of you before, they don't make them anymore. So it actually costs us more money to send them in to get fixed, you know, than to keep them running, so they're.
But the city does make money after those.
You know, how much the city collects from?
We get about 6,500 a month, before the, before COVID-19 happened.
You know, because I mean, I think it would be actually a very good way for us to transition. I mean, if you, they're no longer being, you know, we sort of waive it, it's like a win-win, I mean, you know, you're helping the merchants while, you know, you want to make sure that, you know, they have more foot traffic coming into their places of businesses downtown, and it also gives us a time to try to do that and actually maybe get this up, maybe get it executed, you know, and get things put into play and get it done for when things start to bounce back up, we're ready to go.
Because it does take a little while to, for the transition to happen.
Exactly.
What are we transitioning into?
You know, the meters that you have.
Modern one, the kiosk.
The kiosk with the printer.
The kiosk, kind of, there you go. And it'll cover 10 spots, you remove the meters, which is now even better because we own Main Street for our practical purposes, because Tech Dot gave it to us. We couldn't do a lot while Tech Dot owned the right-of-way, so now that, we own the right-of-way, and we're going to be able to do that a lot easier, facilitated, and we're going to have to do it because we have plans to do bump outs on the sidewalks, which Tech Dot considers to be the right-of-way, and we can do a lot more with that when we don't have meters to be dealing with. So it'll kind of work itself out. Now, we probably just need to get with legal and see if there's any issues, but if it's just a moratorium for the time being, we don't see a particular issue with that.
Do you want to put a time on it? Like a certain?
I think, you know, I don't know.
I was thinking, I don't know how long it's going to take before we transition in, but at least the next six months. I think it's going to be, the economy, I mean, I sent you all the message today, Secretary Wolf of Homeland Security put out a message that they're going to continue the restrictions on the border crossings until July 21st. I wasn't too surprised to hear from him after some, you know, they already had already sent it from our Mexican counterparts, but as we've seen, there's no restrictions in our US citizens, our Eagle Pass citizens, Maverick County citizens, going over there and coming back. The only restriction really is non-citizens, non-Americans coming in to United States. And even though essential, you know, for what our purposes were initially is different than what the Homeland Security is considering essential, so it is going to continue to affect our businesses downtown, really everywhere. While their grocery stores continue to operate, they have taken a decline of 25 to 30% just because of that traffic that we're, that's not coming in from Mexico. So that's why I brought this up and hopefully they come up with a plan, and I think we're just, we're just going to give you direction to come up with a plan of how we can, you know.
Mayor, is there any way that we can do three months and then come back and reconvene in three months?
Yeah, definitely.
Instead of just going for the whole six months?
Definitely.
Let's do three months and then we'll see how the situation, and then go.
Definitely.
And meanwhile, then we need to get working with the transition.
Definitely, and if I may, we have no issue with, the only concern that we do have is just making sure that we have a time limit for the actual parking, because you also don't want, now that it.
That was my concern.
That they stay there all day.
Well, my other concern for that was also, you know, to play devil's advocate, sort of, is what we tried, what we did with, in closing the other parking, the city parking lot adjacent to Bridge One, was to alleviate people leaving their vehicles, you know, extended periods of time. And I just want to make sure that that's not an issue where we're not also compromising safety to where, and it's also difficult for them to police the area to make sure that there's no vehicles that are just stored there for whatever.
Yeah.
That's the only other concern.
We need to put on the parameter of.
You know how you should do it on the parking lot? I don't want them to start doing that in front of stores and Main Street commercials or whatever, you know, it's just.
How would we control that?
Because you know how there's, I mean, it's not, you don't have your little time limit anymore.
That would allow, honestly, I probably think this is best in executive session, we're talking about the enforcement side of it, but yeah, that would be the concern that we have. But yeah, there would have to be at least some signage throughout.
We're going to spend money on putting signs, thing.
Well, then with that being said, it's probably best we take, we take a legal advice.
Motion to the table for executive session by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous, take it to executive session. Now, item number seven, I also want to take it into executive session, so, yeah. Yes, definitely, anybody, motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon, to take this to executive session also. Oh, I'm sorry. Second by Councilman Vialpando. Couldn't hear you with that fast. So, there is a motion and a second to take it to executive session, so all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Alright, moving on to executive session, executive session pursuant to 551.071 and 551.072, chapter 551, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney and deliberation about real property regarding the donation agreement with Wico and Associates, LTD and amendment number one and possible action in open session regarding same. Item number nine, executive session pursuant to sections 551.071 and 551.074, chapter 551, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney and discussion of personnel matters regarding the use of an emergency contingency plan for City of Eagle Pass operations and possible action in open session regarding same. Item number 10, executive session pursuant to sections 551.071, chapter 551, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding urban development action grant loan program and possible action in open session regarding same. And item number 11, executive session pursuant to section 551.071, chapter 551, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation regarding the city's status as a party in SMRD docket number C17-0009-SC-42-C and possible action in open session regarding same. We're also going to take item, well, item number one, we're not taking to executive session, we're just moving it over. Item number three, going into executive session, consideration, I'm sorry, executive session, let me get the wording right, executive session pursuant to section 551.071?
Yes.
Only?
Yes.
Okay. Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney and deliberation, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, authorizing the Friends of Eagle Pass Inc. to manage the Fourth of July event. Also going into executive session, item number?
Seven.
Seven, no.
Six, ten, seven.
Number six. Item number six, executive session pursuant to sections 551.071, chapter 551, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney on discussion and possible action on section 26-138 pertaining to parking meter fees for downtown. And item number seven will also go into executive session, executive session pursuant to sections 551.071, chapter 551, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding discussion and possible action on sections 5.3 pertaining to consumption of alcoholic beverages on premises owned or operated by the city. So let the record reflect, the council went to executive session at 6:03 PM on June 16, 2020. Alright?
Yes.
At this time, we'll go to item number one, for the consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, allocating funds to create business recovery programs for businesses who are negatively affected by COVID-19. So Arturo will be sharing some of the ideas that we've been discussing, and this is just, once again, information for discussion, and we're still asking if you have any other suggestions, ideas, don't hesitate to run it by administration so they can look at those options as well. So, Arturo?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, good evening, Arturo Marquez, Economic Development Department. I'm just going to briefly go over some of the options after the discussion that we had last time. Just to kind of recap, last time we discussed a few, if actually anything, four different options that were brought up. One of them included a loan component, which was, of course, not something that was favorable among elected leaders, so we went ahead and removed that. So with that, I've kept three different options which pertain to grant-only component. The first option is to grant a business, to give a business a grant, using the value of anywhere from one to three months' rent in order to determine the amount to be given to a business, and with the priority given to those businesses that were shut down the longest, businesses that were deemed non-essential, you're talking about your gyms, your bars, you know, things of that like. You're talking about your gyms, your bars, you know, things of that like. Now, on option number two, you have something very similar with, with a little twist that was discussed last time. And it involves vouchers. Uh, this was an idea that was mentioned in order to drive additional business into the establishments that are being helped. Uh, option number two, of course, is again, something that is based off of the grant, or the, the rent value of one to three months with the added, uh, component of twenty-five percent of vouchers given from the business to either the city or a third party to be distributed equally and transparently to, to the public. Again, this is something based out of, uh, some of the comments that were made last time, um, to, to, to drive business in there, to drive additional business into the establishment. Uh, additionally, the last option is something that we discussed, uh, as we've mentioned, or as it was mentioned in the, in the previous meeting. Uh, July twenty-fifth is gonna be the last day that, uh, unemployment is available to the general public. Uh, with this in mind, uh, we have gotten a few calls, and by that I mean numerous calls about individuals being concerned about being able to pay the rent. Uh, these individuals are neither business owners or anything of that like, so they were thrown in here just as an additional assistance. And with this, uh, this is rental assistance for the individuals, uh, these again are not business owners. Business, I mean, uh, individuals that were either furloughed, fired, had produced hours or, or anything that has to be COVID-related, um, or anything that's COVID-related due to their job can ask for, again, one to three months of, uh, rent to be able to, to maintain their, their household. Now, this one would be paid directly to the landlord, uh, just to avoid any discrepancies or anything of that like. Before I go onto the slide, I, I just wanna open it up and see if there's any discussion, uh, just to, you know, before I go into, into detail of, of, of any details of either of these options.
Well, I'm just glad you took out the loan part, 'cause I don't think anyone else liked that idea.
Do y'all have any indication as to how you would, uh, consider disseminating the vouchers to ascertain that it would be equitably distributed and fair?
So if anything, that's probably the topic of discussion that we would definitely need to consider in depth uh, in order to be equitable to anybody and everybody that does participate in the, in the program. Um, we've come up with two different options, if that's the case, and that's about the, the council wants to take. Uh, one of them is I did reach out to WIC, um, they are able to do a partnership with the city, uh, for them to distribute the vouchers if that's the case. Um, another one is that I reached out to a, a technology company where we can devise a part of our, uh, website to have people go in there and fill out information to request vouchers. The way I envision this, if this were to be the route that we take, is to, uh, put on the website the number of companies that we've assisted with this program. And an individual can go in there, input their, their information, you know, saying, I'm such and such, I live in this specific address, you know, age and, you know, all the pedigree that comes with it, uh, to request a specific voucher, uh, out of that specific business. Again, collecting the data, uh, but again, this is something that, if this is the route that we take, we would need to discuss in further detail. Which, again, given the comments that, that we're gonna receive here tonight, uh, would determine if we go into detail about that.
I wanna say my, when I see these options, my first instinct is, is first of all, that, that I wanna help, like all the council members, I'm sure the mayor, we wanna help the businesses that were affected by COVID, the businesses that were closed. And to me, the, what I think is, is the most simple feasible solution is let's help, let's give grants to those businesses that lost money. You show us proof that you were closed, that you suffered this loss, and in turn, the city gives you a grant, like option one. And we give them the grant to help them, and we don't ask for anything back. I don't, the idea of a voucher that's kind of like saying, oh, here's a grant, give me something back. And for me, the logistics of it, it seems like it's gonna be hard to determine who are we gonna give a voucher to? How much? What business? The amounts? Seems like a, a logistic mess when we could just help the businesses that have losses by giving them grants without forcing them, or not forcing them, but requiring, making it a condition like, here's a grant, but give me vouchers. That's just my idea. So I would go with option one. That's my opinion.
If we're, if we're considering all three, I mean, as three different options individually or collectively, three different ways to help individuals. Uh, I mean, the reason I was asking is I was thinking, and I'm reading over them again. One of the ways that I think that could be equitably, if we were to distribute some of the vouchers, I under, I concur with what you said about option one, and I think that's one that should automatically just go through. But if we're also asking for the twenty-five percent in vouchers to come back, maybe an idea to think about is, is how you have option three, that's more for the individual. Even though we will be paying the landlord right for their rent, perhaps some of the vouchers that come in could go to those, some of those recipients of option three. Because that way you're also helping the family individually as well. If the vouchers are coming in, you know what I mean, as we disseminate the check for their tenant, for their landlord, we can say, well, we also have some of these available, and this might assist you in, you know, offsetting some other, uh, living expenses, and that might be a route to disseminate.
Right, so one of the things that I do wanna point out as, as we're talking about the voucher system, if that's something that, um, the, the council wants to entertain, is that we have to be extremely careful as to how we approach this because we have to be, like you mentioned, equitable to everybody that participates. If we have, I think this was mentioned through the Commissioners Court meeting just this week, that if there's an individual that, um, can and does fit the description of somebody that would be eligible for this program, and, you know, months down the line, we find another individual that fit that same description, but was not granted the, the, the voucher, again, that's not being equitable to, to all the public. So again, if, if this is a route that the council wants to take, we have to make sure that we're transparent, equitable, um, in this, in this process.
We asked you last time to, um, because in my opinion, I prefer option one to. And, and we asked you all to come up, like, maybe with a list of businesses. Were you all able to compile that, that list like that or no?
So it's kinda all over the place, uh, to be quite fair with you. It's, it's, it's all over the place, it's the types of businesses that were affected.
But I think the question is the ones that shut down, the ones that weren't deemed non-essential. I think we have that list because we worked on it with, at the ELC, so.
There's a lot of the nurseries that were downtown florists, some of the florists, the hairdressers, spas. Some of the restaurants, I mean, because some of the restaurants are buffets. They're obviously not open, I mean, there's a lot of people that I think can benefit. The one that I'm most skeptical with is number two, is just because of, like I said, I wanna make sure that if we're gonna do that, that we're gonna be equitable to everyone and fair. But I'm okay with one and three, options one and three, I think that's, those are good ways to help the people. Cause we're not only helping the businesses, but we're also helping the families.
Let me, I mean, the only way we can get equitable, and I don't know that we can. But if you're looking, if you're looking at option one, I mean, are you gonna take in applications to a certain date and then evaluate them?
Yes, so actually part of the requirements, uh, does require us to disseminate the, these funds before December thirty-first, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, yeah, we gotta give them money by December thirty-first, but, I mean, if we're gonna have, if it's just a grant, yeah, we're gonna give them money. As I still think the voucher system gets more people back into their business as well. And that's why I like that idea. I mean, it's not just about helping the business, but it's also helping the business get their customers in. You know, and that's, that's why I like option two. They're gonna get the money regardless. And for example, a hairstylist. I mean, I don't know anybody that charges five bucks, but if they give five dollar vouchers for a certain amount, like you're saying twenty-five percent. So we give them a thousand dollar grant, and they give two hundred and fifty and vouch, five dollar vouchers, you know, then they're gonna get, how many is that? Two fifty by, by five? Fifty. Okay? So fifty vouchers, they're gonna get fifty people going to them, and who knows, they might be new clients. And they're still gonna pay more, you know, than, than just the five dollar voucher.
The problem is.
If you really think about it, if it's the two fifty, it's gonna become the five hundred.
Yeah, the problem.
Five dollars is off, you're gonna still get the ten.
The problem is gonna be, who's gonna get this five dollar voucher? And who, what person? Well, I guess you mentioned WIC, but it's gonna be hard, okay, this person gets a, a voucher and this one doesn't. I just don't want it to become a problem where there's even a little bit of, like, favoritism and people start saying, hey, I didn't get a voucher, he did. And it, it could become a mess and I don't want any, any part of, or part of that, to be honest. I, I want, I, me myself, I wanna help the businesses that were hurt. I, I wanna, what I would like to see is just give them a grant, help those businesses. I also like option three, also rental assistance to, to the people. I agree with that also, one and three, but that, the voucher deal, logistically, it's gonna be a mess.
Look, there's so many ways to do it, but I know one of the discussions we had was, uh, whenever they have the health fairs, the committee of health fairs before going back to school, and we don't know how it's gonna be this year, but that's an idea, an area where, you know, normally it's people of the most need that attend those fairs. You know, they're, they're going in for the free checkups, they're going in for, I don't know, they do haircuts, I think they've done haircuts in the past too, but.
They have done them, they have done.
Right, they have had it in the past too? So, I mean, that's where you can look at those people attending those fairs, and, and that's, is it gonna be equitable? Nothing's gonna be equitable, cause you're gonna have all kinds of businesses applying possibly, and then you're still gonna, you know, rate them. I think the first ones we gotta look at are the ones that were closed down. You know, um, so.
I sort of like, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, and that's what we gotta look at. So everybody lost money. Okay? Or, I don't know, they lost money, they didn't make money. Okay?
Therefore, they lost.
You know, very few people, you know, were making money during this COVID nineteen and we closed down, you know, non-essential businesses across the state. So those are the ones we gotta identify first and foremost, and then, you know, they're gonna apply, and I don't know how you're gonna equitably give an amount or determine, all of it's gonna have complications to it. I think at the end of the day, we gotta put it down in writing.
Because I know I'm the one that I keep saying about the equity, being equitable, I just wanna make sure that we're fair and give everyone a fair chance. But the intent is, I, and, and I understand that we all have the same idea, the same thought process behind it, so we wanna help as many as we can. Now, you, since you've brought up the idea of the health fair or the back-to-school fair, I mean, we can look into that if it's actually going to happen. Uh, we can sort of piggyback the idea of how the chamber does things, I mean, just give them tickets as they're coming in and do a, a raffle drawing. And you know what, that's where you give out the vouchers. Your number is drawn, this is your voucher, done.
But, you know what, I mean, we're talking equity and being, you know, fair to everyone. I think right there and then, we're already not being fair because we're assuming that everyone, not everyone goes through WIC and that everyone goes through those fairs. So do we wanna be fair to everyone? That's definitely not a way of being fair, cause with this, everyone was affected.
Well, the fairness will be the lottery, you know.
So are we gonna be able to get everyone? No, we're not. And so if we're not doing that, then we're not being fair to all the citizens, so I, I don't know, I, I just.
I, I think.
Going back to, to helping out, I'm sorry?
I saw that sometimes life isn't fair.
Yeah, you're right. I think for option one, couldn't we form a committee that reviews, I think you had mentioned, a committee that reviews the applications? You give a deadline, this, that's a, business comes, applies for the grant, shows you proof of their income before COVID and the losses that they had, and then.
And that they were closed.
Yeah, and they were closed.
I see, yeah, and that's, I'm glad you brought that up because I was gonna make sure that if they're applying for this, that they didn't, you're, you wanna make sure that they did not receive any other type of assistance?
Yes, proof, thank you.
The EIDL or anything else, yeah, that's fine, because even SBA didn't ask for the proof that we're alluding to about proof of losses and stuff like that, I mean, it's, the turnaround time is too short for us to be that critical, we're gonna have to almost take things at face value. I mean, remember, we're not giving away hundreds of thousands, we're probably giving away like three thousand months.
So when you're talking about going through the applications for the business, uh, that are applying for the program, uh, we've obviously set up some, some requirements to make sure that they meet them. One of them, which you just mentioned, is of course making sure that they did not receive additional funding through the PPP or the emergency EIDL program. Uh, of course, in addition to that, we wanna make sure that they did suffer, uh, additional losses beyond what was really expected, which in this point we've, uh, identified through a fifteen percent reduction, reduction in sales over the past couple of months. Um, and the declaration itself, we issued it out in March eighteenth. So the business must have been in business, uh, before March eighteenth, of course, cause that's when we officially sent out the notice of businesses to shut down, uh, you know, this is when we told the, the gyms and the, the, the hair salon parlors and all that stuff to, to shut down. So this date is kind of pretty much a predetermined date of, of when this, uh, the city took additional action, uh, through COVID. So, I mean, there, there are some requirements that we've set in line, uh, especially for the businesses, if they are gonna be, uh, applying for this program. Uh, but again, that's the businesses, if you look at it as in a numbers game, a business, a, a business, uh, has a much lesser amount, um, you know, if you're looking at it, how many, uh, businesses are registered in, in Eagle Pass, you got, you have about two thousand. Whereas, once we're talking about the voucher system, we're talking about individuals, so we have to expand that number back into the thirty thousand, uh, individuals of the population.
Right.
I think the, that fifteen percent reduction in sales is too low because HEB had a twenty-five percent decrease. Okay? And they were in business.
Yeah, well, HEB's not gonna need three thousand dollars. I think this is more for, for local.
Local, small business.
Local, small business. I'm pretty sure HEB, Walmart, they're not gonna come applying for, for this grant.
Well, maybe you might add a criteria.
They could, I mean, they could, but, you know, but that's why I think that's too little.
More than X number of employees, maybe twenty to thirty max, because it's anything over that, I mean, I don't, it's the thirty thousand, it's not gonna do much.
Yeah, part of the reason why I kind of left this out in the open is, of course, again, once we start going into the different, uh, I guess, options that we have available, um, that's where we, where you guys would make the determination of what kind of businesses you wanna help. Uh, in most cases, other cities, the threshold that they have set to be able to assist the small businesses is that they, they've set a threshold of, uh, no sales revenue, uh, over one million. Um, now, again, this is just an arbitrary number, um, but if you're thinking about, uh, you know, HEB versus, you know, your, your mom and pop, uh, you know, one million is a, is a good threshold to, to set a standard by. So again, uh, what we're hoping to get here, um, is to get at least some sort of, uh, idea of, of what option you guys are leaning towards. That way we can start adjusting and structuring each different, uh, program as, uh, as the council sees fit. But yes, so it's a little, I wanna say it's a little vague at the moment simply because of that, because we, we need a little bit of directive into what, um, what type of program you guys wanna, uh, create, that way we can start structuring and detailing it, uh, as, as we go along.
I would, again, and I don't wanna be redundant, but I would side with, with, uh, making a, some sort of committee with people that we have in the city, maybe including yourself or, or Finance Director, City Manager, having a committee review applications from local small businesses affected by COVID and seeing if we can help them with a grant. That's the, the option I would side with.
Well, well, and one and two, you're helping them out with a grant, but the voucher's actually gonna help them get people in there, and so.
Yeah, but if they cannot make the rent for two, three months, then there's no people gonna be going into the businesses anyways, you know? It's just, I think at this point, it's more important to help the business because if the business closes, then there's no business, you know? Regardless of whether I have vouchers or not, you know? I mean, doesn't.
Well, the grant's gonna be there, I mean, nobody's saying to give away the grant.
Plus the voucher or just a grant without the vouchers, what you're saying, right?
I think the grant with a voucher, you know, gives them the money upfront, and they're not gonna give all the grant and voucher.
It doesn't change the amount that they can receive, is what you're saying.
So, so are we?
Well, it does, because we would have to use a certain percentage for, for one number one and a certain percentage for number two.
Well, no, 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 no.
You want it to, right, it's one or the other.
Yeah, and then option.
Whether or without the vouchers, with differences.
With the voucher, this is what you're saying, you're saying, oh, you're a local business and, and, and you're hurting, so you have to give me a voucher. What if they say no? I don't wanna give you a voucher, then what do we say? Oh, we're not gonna give you a grant? Even though they were a business? It, it's kind of like making it a requirement, and I don't think it's fair.
And and that's where.
Businesses to give you something. If you if you wanna give them a grant and help them, let's help them without that condition of, hey, give me a voucher. And then who are you gonna give those vouchers to, it sounds fishy, I mean.
It it's not gonna be any fishier or or any more complicated complicated than who we're gonna give a grant to.
No.
Because we have hundreds of businesses that shut their door.
Yeah, and and we have thirty thousand people that we're gonna give these vouchers to?
No, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're not gonna give to every business. Can, how much can we, if we were to split up all the businesses that closed down, how much could we give them?
Uh, well, the rent itself kind of varies.
No, 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 I'm saying we got three hundred and something thousand, close to four hundred thousand. So, if if we have, how many businesses that closed down?
If they, well, if you average three thousand per business, you're talking about a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty business, and I think there's more than that that.
That actually felt.
Also, just to be transparent, could you? May and maybe some people are listening, and just so that people could understand, could you explain what we mean by a voucher?
Yeah, so the the way the the voucher system would work is that we would of course grant the, well, give the grants to the business. Uh, that business, based on the value of that grant, would uh give back the city, uh, in this case, twenty-five percent uh worth of vouchers.
Can you give an example, just to make it, not everybody knows.
No, yeah, of course, so, let's let's kind of take the example of of a hair salon. Uh, let's, you know, take uh the assumption that we give a thousand dollars to the hair salon. Um, that salon would be then be required to give two hundred fifty uh dollars uh worth of vouchers to us. Um, that, of course, we would make a determination how to split them up, whether they're five dollar value vouchers, ten dollar valued vouchers, or what have you. And then we would, in that case, redistribute to the community, um, with the hopes to uh to to lead additional business into the establishment.
And if it's a like a grocery, a small grocery store that applies for a grant. What kind of voucher, would it also be a five dollar voucher?
Again, it's, that's where it gets.
I think it depends on the business, yeah, I mean, there there's no gonna be the same amount for everybody, it's not one size fits all.
It's just not a fair.
Be up to the. The business that applies and gets it. That they're gonna give, you know. Vouchers of a certain amount, and it's really up to them, and I'm, I use the example of the hair salon, cuz I mean, I know it's at least fifteen dollars for a haircut. Okay, and you give them five, you're still gonna get ten dollars, but you already got the other five anyways.
Right.
Okay, we already paid you the other five, and it was in advance for what, you know, hopefully, you're gonna get some business also. And and that could help out. Many businesses in the community. With a grant, now. You know, Luisi Fuentes Burger Shop, okay, and I wasn't making money, so I show my proof. And, okay, give me a thousand dollar grant, and I'm gonna give you two hundred and fifty dollars and five dollar vouchers, cuz, you know, and a hamburger, a meal. You're not gonna get it for five bucks right now, you know, it's eight, ten bucks. So, you're still gonna pay, but you already got money and you got people there, and if it's a family of six like mine, you're gonna get one five dollar voucher and you're gonna spend, you know, more still. So, it it helps both ways, it helps the citizens as much as it helps the business. But the business is gonna get it upfront, now, let's say I never used that five dollar voucher. The business still got the money. The business is not gonna lose out on that five dollars because somebody didn't claim the voucher. They're gonna get their grant. You know, so, I mean, it's a win-win for them and for the other individuals. Because the other way is, you give a grant and only the business gets a look, gets some, and. Your citizens, nobody gets anything.
We gotta remember that the businesses suffered, we have to help these businesses without, again, without. Putting a condition like, hey, I'm giving you this, but give me this back, that's not really a grant, I mean.
It is.
You're you're putting a condition on it, right?
That's the way grants work nowadays. When was the last, when was the last free grant we got that we didn't have to pay and, you know, match anything?
You're putting a condition, and like I said, what if some businesses don't wanna give you a voucher?
That's the way grants work.
What if, what if a business says, no, I don't wanna give you a voucher?
That's their choice.
You, we don't give them a grant?
Well, they don't apply.
But what if they do apply, but they say?
Well, once again, you know, we we're not, we haven't decided what we're gonna route, which route we're gonna go.
Right.
But, it's really, the easy thing, you're right, the easy thing is to give them a grant. Give every, the businesses that apply, try to give them a grant, and that's it, that's all they're gonna get. That doesn't guarantee that somebody else is gonna come into their business. All it guarantees is, here's your one thousand, two thousand, three thousand dollars, whatever it may be.
You're helping them, right?
Yeah, and the same thing with option two. But in this case, you're asking them, you know, in lieu of a certain percentage, give some vouchers. To attract people to come in and spend the voucher and possibly more money. Because unlike Jesse, I don't know many people that are gonna go and just spend what the voucher is for.
But we we need, the the voucher might create.
Just don't give them to Jesse.
Unfairness, and we have to be transparent with the people. Who are who are we gonna give these vouchers to, who who's gonna control that? It's it's.
And that's what we have to work on, and there's several options being tossed around.
I have a, I have a question, I'm sorry, I'll let you sidebar over there. But on option one, I know it only state, it stipulates about three month, one to three months rent. My concerns is we're, I'm so focused on the business and helping them uh under either option one or two. I think we need to also add a maybe a caveat too, cuz some people might be purchasing the business or the the property. Is that in there somewhere or about, maybe give them the option to if if it's a mortgage or whether it be. For utilities or something other than, because they might have prepaid rent or stuff of that nature, that might not be a a non-issue. But this might be another way to help them, just.
Yeah, so similar to the the PPP program, uh, one of the things that they threw in there was, of course, you know, in in that specific scenario where they don't necessarily rent, but rather rather own. Uh, they focused it on uh the, well, not the PPP, but the the interest portion of it. And in some cases, in other cities, what they've been doing is just that, focusing on the utilities.
Okay.
So, rather than getting the amount out of the rent, uh, they base it off of the utilities and the interest on their uh on their payment.
Okay. I just wanna make sure there's other options available to help them, that was not only rent only, you know?
Right, yeah, and that is something that we've gone a couple calls from. Um, businesses that don't necessarily rent, but actually own on their property.
That on the property.
Right.
I'll just, on the, I know that this is in relation to the twenty-five percent that we can utilize to to help businesses. But on the other seventy-five percent. Did you look at other ways we can use, we discussed possibly assisting people that have been negatively affected by COVID nineteen, but. I mean, what are some other options that are there in terms of helping them, helping regular citizens? With utilities and and other things like that?
So, the individual assistance or anything pretty much uh related to economic stimulus. Has to be within the twenty-five percent.
Mm-hmm.
Anything that's related to public health measures is covered under the seventy-five percent of the grant. So, just to recap, the city through the state has been granted up to one point five million dollars. So, we're talking about, what what Arturo's talking about is the twenty-five percent or the three hundred and ninety-five thousand for economic stimulus. The remainder of that, which is just uh, which is just over one point one million, is for public health. And so, it's to cover the costs that the city has incurred during the response. Uh, but it's also eligible for other public health measures, can it can be used to assist businesses as well. So, if a business is in need of installing uh sneeze guards. They could technically come before the council and request funding for that.
I'm telling what I'm sorry.
Sneezes, the glass.
The plexi shoe.
Plexi, plexi.
Plexiglas.
Yes, and so.
See, I would, I would like to concentrate more on stuff like that.
Yeah, and I think that's a more, uh, that's like a different conversation.
The health.
To have at a follow-up meeting, because, you know, how we're gonna assist businesses and that is very different for how we're gonna assist businesses on this. Because we do wanna help as many businesses as possible, especially the small businesses, who don't have those protections for their employees. And so, we want them to have those protections, and so, we do have that other batch of money that can help them. But uh, that that's where I think the focus, is where we feel the focus should be on in public, in the public health side.
Right.
But for the economic side, that's twenty-five percent.
So, but what are the things that'd be considered for public health? Um, somebody not able to pay their water bill, is is having water a public health?
Uh, by the guideline set by the state, that would be part of the twenty-five percent, as in terms of economic assistance, not uh public health.
Oh.
Because the public health has to be in response to COVID nineteen. And so, and one of the things that we're concerned with, um, is what the future holds. You know, nobody knows what's going to happen, and you know, God forbid that. Our hospital becomes overwhelmed, where we need a secondary clinic site, well, that money's there for that.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we don't wanna tap into everything right now, because we don't know what's down the road.
Oh, no, you're right, you're right. But down the line, those are things that we can look at, because we do need to try to spend all of it by December thirty-first.
Correct.
We don't spend it by December thirty-first, we can't access that funding.
Okay, uh, Jesse and Mr. Marcus, okay, and I I, you know, I don't mean to put either one of you on the spot here, okay? But obviously, we cannot come to an agreement, you know, we have different opinions as to how this needs to be used or should be used, okay? Now, I wanna hear you all's opinion, because you just finished telling us that. Um, really, you know, this part of the money should be maybe saved, so that we can concentrate on this if the need arises. You know, I'm thinking maybe purchasing ourselves, the city, those bars, the shields, you know, giving them out to the businesses, if we needed to do that. So, where do you stand in relation to the? To the vouchers, because I'm hearing from you, we need to concentrate on more concrete things versus just giving people five, ten, fifteen dollar vouchers. What is your opinion on that, and Mr. Marcus, I wanna hear your opinion as well?
So, the issue that. Grants is under, you know, my department, and with grants, it's always the crossing the Ts and dotting the Is that get you. And my big concern is that the, whatever program we come up with, we have to be able to police. And so, we have to, with this funding, is we're supposed to verify that it goes to those who need it.
Right.
Because of COVID. Uh, my concern with this from the beginning has been that. That these, the the grants, it's very clear, you know, you're going to the business because you are, they were affected by COVID, they were shut down as a result of of government action. And so, with the vouchers. You know, we're getting them in return, now how are we making sure that they're going to people who are negatively affected? And those crossing the Ts and dotting the Is on that is what concerns me, because, you know, I I I I tend to err on the side of caution. And maybe sometimes too much, I'll go, I'll give you that, sometimes I'm a little bit too cautious, but I'm, you know, my my focus is on.
Thing is too cautious.
Yeah, my focus is always is on protecting the city from for the requirements that are set. And so, without a clear process on how these vouchers are gonna be given, it's really hard for me to say, let's do the vouchers. Granted, I think the vouchers is, you know, uh, it it it's a good idea for getting people in the door, but there's no doubt. The problem is how the logistics and how do you implement this program, and how do you make sure that it gets to the right hands? And so, trying to find that middle ground is very difficult. Uh, but, you know, ultimately, I I said, I'm gonna side on the air of caution, and I'd rather paperwork be as clean as possible. So that we, cuz we have to go back to the state and say, this is how we spend it, and it's gonna, you know, everything's gonna be laid out clearly, that would be my preference.
So, is it, okay, so that would be your preference, you just said it, so then, is it fair to say that your preference slash recommendation is? One and three versus two?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Mr. Marcus?
So, with the voucher program, it does add a level of complexity, uh, aside from running through the the applications themselves. Uh, I do expect a high number of businesses to apply for this program in itself. Uh, of course, we're we're a little bit short-step because of the furloughed employees, so. Uh, adding that level of complexity with the with the voucher um system does add additional work involved. That uh we just do not have, currently, we do not have the the manpower to do. Um, I second Mr. Mr. Rodriguez's comment that the voucher system in itself, uh, seems like. An amazing idea, because it does logically draw in more more people into the business. Uh, but again, um, there there are some some good points that, you know, we we don't, we wanna help the the business community as quickly as possible. And as uh without any any strings attached to it as as possible. Um, therefore, my opinion is 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 option one. Um, and to side on 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 option one with without the the voucher.
I I agree with.
Let me ask you a question, because I mean, I'm just gonna play devil's advocate here a little bit, cuz I always like to make sure I. Go through all options well. I know how it seems to be the rough spot if we say that it's conditional upon. If you go over option two, excuse me, that the the grant is conditional upon us receiving twenty-five percent in value. What if it were to be optional and up to the business, if they want to participate in the voucher program? And give us back up to twenty-five percent value, and that's essentially free marketing for them. And then disseminated with those that received it, option three. That's the only thing that I can think of that way, cuz you've already had people that have been applicants. And they're receiving the rental assistance, and these are just a few vouchers here, if you need a haircut, you need a, whatever the service may be, there's your vouchers, it's all. Everything flows, everything's accounted for. It's not, you do not have to participate in the voucher portion of it if you do not want to, it does, it will not. Hamper you in any way from receiving a grant. And it will not give you an incentive to receiving the grant, it is just an optional rider, if you wanna call it that, if they wanna participate in this optional program, that's just. Another out there, let me just throw another idea out there. I would just try to listen to everything that was going on here and, you know, see what things were bothering people, were not bothering, but concerning.
I think. That probably still wouldn't eliminate. The the issue you're saying, how to give out the voucher.
Well, I was saying that you would give them out to the people that apply for option three. Because they've already established that they were negatively impacted by COVID, whether it be, what is it, by being laid off for a low fire, reduced hours. Or hospitalized to uh pay for their rent, but the rent will obviously be being paid to the landlord, but this would be given directly to the applicant themselves. Do you understand, like, those that were awarded the rental assistance and under option three would get some of the vouchers, if whatever comes in, we don't know what we're gonna get. We might get it just from one store, we might get it from.
What is the amount that we're talking about? That is gonna be available?
The program itself is just under four, four hundred.
Three hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Yeah, three.
So, we have three ninety-five.
Three ninety-five.
A thousand, of course.
I I know, Jess, your concerns are. The books and keeping it in order. Um. I really don't like the fact that a comment was made that it takes a lot of work, well, everything takes work. Okay? And so, that should not be something that should be thrown out there ever, cuz everything takes work. Now, when it comes to the vouchers, it's this, it's a, you're already giving the grant to the business, okay? And the co, the business is gonna determine the amount and the vouchers. And so, at that point, and and I like Mayor Pro Tim Davis's idea, the rental assistance part, you know, but. How are you gonna verify? That they were laid off and did not get. More benefits through unemployment? Are you gonna be asking for all those documents?
There's no way to.
So, the idea on the, the idea on the rental assistance is that it would not be effective until August. So, at that point, there are no additional unemployment benefits, like right now, those who qualified for it will are getting the six hundred additional per week. So, in order to qualify for this, you have to continue to be unemployed after that point. And so, you're you're receiving no more than five hundred dollars per week at that time. Right now, you could be receiving up to twelve hundred dollars per week with the additional benefit. But in August, it's gonna be no more than five twenty-one, I believe, I think that's a max.
That's a regular?
Yes, and so.
Unless the government changes something there.
Yeah, and so, we don't, yeah, we're not sure, but I believe there's talk that at the end of July, there may be another bill that will be proposed, but. Not until that time, we won't know, and unfortunately, we can't continue to hold on to this money when we know that it needs to.
No, cuz another, another idea that popped up on the vouchers. Um, we've got the school district that we can work with also, they got their student aid, student advocate recruiters. They identify the, you know, the ones that are less fortunate, and they identify homeless people. And and that's a route we can consider also to distribute vouchers by campuses through the through the SARS, working with the district. You know, they know the kids that are most in need and the families that are most in need, and that's across the community. Now, if we'd have to limit it to citizens, of course, that would be something that they would have to to lick it also. But I can tell you, if. I'm not sure what the county's gonna do, but I venture to say they're going along the lines of the voucher grant part, and. The judge even said at the. And the judge even said at the meeting the other day, he's not shy of giving a hundred and fifty thousand of that grant money. To businesses in the community, in the city limits. Because, as he said, they're, they're also in the county. So he knows there's more businesses in this, within the city limits and for that reason, he's willing to do that as well. So I think if they do that, then the school district will be really instrumental in helping distribute those vouchers out. So there's an easy way to do it. You hand over the vouchers to the school district, their student advocate recruiters know the ones that are more needy. And that's one way to help out those citizens. You know, along the whole community. And, and if we're both doing a similar thing, then it's going to be spread out, I'm not going to say equitably. But as evenly as can possibly be done. So that is a way to partner with the school district also in terms of, because that's when school starts. That's when parents are going to need to go, you know, buy possibly some new clothing, you know, and so.
I think with all due respect, the, the county is a, a different entity. We're here, we're, we're hearing from our very own finance director, our economic director. That a voucher system is probably not feasible. It doesn't make sense because it's going to be, it comes with a lot of problems.
I don't think they said it was not feasible.
Well, I'm not.
I don't think they said it didn't make sense. I think it's, makes it a little more complicated, but that should not be a reason in itself to say, oh, it's not good.
Yeah, you, you can't say, oh, the county's doing this, so I got, I, I have to do with the county.
I think I said, I'm not sure what they're going to do, but they're following, they, they, they like the idea of the grant voucher as well. And if they're willing to put money into that as well, it could benefit within the city limits also.
But you're not the county judge, you're with the city.
I'm just saying what I've heard.
Okay, well, we need to decide what we're going to do. Or, I mean, we're not just, just going to do what the county does, right?
No, we're going to do what we think is best and, you know, we have our differences of opinions right now. And the fact that it might be a little more complicated to work out a voucher system, which, you know, takes a little more work. I don't think it's a reason to shut it down, but, you know, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
And I think when you're giving money to businesses and you're finding a way to get people in, more people into their businesses. I mean, that, that to me is economics. That's economic development, that's economic growth, okay? Just giving a grant? That's not guaranteeing more people are going to go into their business. So my goal is give the grant and get people into their business. That's the grant voucher system. Is it going to be more work? Yeah.
I think.
Well, we have differences of opinion.
Uh-huh, and, and, and Mr. Salinas, I agree with you in the sense that, yes, we are a different entity. So we cannot sit here and say, okay, well, you know, the school or the county are going to do that. I think we need to be concerned about what we need to do. I agree in the sense that Mr. Rodriguez is trying to pretty much keep us out of trouble. I think that's the way I understand, you know, yes, it is a lot of work. And I think all of us here are, are hard workers, including Jesse and including Mr. Marquez and including everyone in our team. But, um, it's just, you know, you extending it to the school even. You know, because they have their own program and their own federal programs that, that take care of these kids. I think extending it to the school like that, it's, you know, we're just giving it to people here, 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 here. You know, you give them out and we've seen and we know how some of those things have gone in the past, you know? I mean, I, I just think if we do that, it's definitely not going to be fair. Or well distributed, you know? I, um, I, I have a lot of, you know, very skeptical about going that route. I mean, I, 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 I want to help, I want to help the businesses. I believe that, um, if the businesses stay open, you know, it's pretty soon and as soon as this is over and done with, you know, uh. Hopefully, the economy will start back up and we'll be able to do that. I feel that, you know, I can have a hundred dollars worth of grants, but if the businesses are not open, I, I can't use them anyways, you know? Um, it, it's hard, but again, I concur with Mr. Salinas. You know, we are one entity, the school, the county, totally different. Even though I believe in working together, I feel that everyone should, it's, it's responsible for different things. And we should be doing our own. It's just like a household, your household is run different than yours and yours and mine, you know, it's the same thing here. Um, I, I, my opinion is I agree with you guys, Mr. Marquez, Jesse. I don't believe that the voucher, only because of that thing. If you were to show me a plan where, you know what, this is what we're doing and it's going to be fair to everyone. You know, maybe I would change my mind because I, I've, you know, I, I've done it before. Convince me and I can do it. But up until right now, I'm not convinced that this is the best option. Only because I'm thinking about how can we be fair to everyone? Not just the people that are, that are going to be receiving these vouchers, but to all the businesses, you know? Because, I mean, I think that's just the way it is. You know, people prefer one business over the other and I can guarantee you that most of those, and some businesses make more money than others. So they can offer, you know, more, um, sales per se, you know, than maybe the smaller business. So most people are going to tend to go to this business versus all this, you know? So we're still not being fair. So, I mean, it's, it's a tough one, you know, it's a tough one. And, and, I mean, with you guys' opinion and, and the way I, I originally feel about this. It's, it's, it's hard for me to go for number two. I mean, that's just the way it is. I, I don't know.
Let me ask a question, is there any programs that y'all might be aware of that are already doing rental assistance that would already be helping our residents? Because I'm, I, I know we're already working with a very limited amount of funds. And if there are programs that they might already be able to take advantage of that. Then my recommendation would probably be then, let's just put the three ninety-five, is what you said, into one of the options for the business grants.
I agree with that.
So the closest example of the rental assistance for the individual is actually in San Antonio. They, they do have a, a very similar, if anything, they probably were one of the first ones to, to implement the program. Uh, they have a determined threshold of three thousand dollars for assistance on the rental portion of it. Whereas fifteen hundred dollars for utilities. So there are different programs out there, uh, again, the closest one is probably San Antonio.
But there's nothing for our local residences that are, that you're aware of? I don't, is there?
Here.
Oh.
Local, yeah, I, I, I'm aware of the one in San Antonio because I know that.
For rental assistance, not that I'm aware of, no.
I mean, because I know, like, we had mentioned before that Cassie was available, but I don't know if that's, are you, any of y'all aware that there's?
Cassie's still alive, I mean, they're still available, but I don't know.
Doing that or through the community, so, um, what's the other one that's at the, I mean, I know they're located at the Sun, uh, Seco Mine Center.
The Texas A and M Colonias program?
It's C S, Community Service, I, I don't remember the exact name of the, uh, I can't, it's, I'm drawing a blank right now. But I, I mean, I know some of those programs exist, I just don't want to make sure that we're not doubling up. I mean, instead of trying to spread it out, let's just focus on one thing, you know?
I think if it was out there and it was helping out, it would have hurt, the city would have hurt something by now, right?
I know the mayor was working.
Because I know they do like electric, electricity and stuff, but.
I, I know the mayor was trying to work on getting some funding potentially through the housing authority. Since this is a housing issue, uh, something that we're going to work towards to try to partner with them to see if we can get funding.
Right.
So the option, one of the options that we do have, or that we might have, is that if you want to do an approval contingent on us not getting other funding. Through the housing authority, like I mentioned, the housing, the rental assistance program, we don't recommend starting until August.
Right.
Uh, because that's when people who are unemployed will start to feel the hurt a little more. Um, but tha- that's another option, you could do a contingent on us not getting.
Couldn't we split the money and say, like, for example, okay, three hundred can be used for grants? And, and put aside one hundred for rental assistance?
I believe that's a recommendation.
Yeah, that, that actually was the, the original intent. Of course, again, we're, we're trying to figure out what options, so what programs you guys see that would be best fit. Uh, from there, it's a matter of adjusting the, the amounts into each individual program.
Have we, and at any point in all this, Mr. Marquez? I mean, other than, you know, we've spoken to, I know I've spoken to a couple, the mayor has, Mr. Salinas has, I'm sure you all have too. Everyone has probably spoken to one or two business owners. Have we formally surveyed the businesses, see what it is that they would prefer to see? Because I'm going to tell you one thing, I, I, I own a business. And if you ask me right now, as a result of all this, would I prefer help with the rental? Uh, with option eight or option two? I'm going to be flat out and tell you, definitely option eight, option one, you know? I mean, have we at any point?
Uh, no, no, we have not.
Formally asked any of those businesses, no?
A, a formal survey, we have not issued a formal, a formal survey, no.
Informal?
Informal, phone calls, conversations, uh, you know, getting the communication with the businesses, yes. We, we've spoken to plenty of businesses about this.
What do they say about?
So the idea about the rental assistance actually came from, uh, that, those specific, uh, conversations. When we were asking the businesses, you know, exactly.
To help you.
Right, what, how can we help, what is it that you got most impacted on? Uh, you know, where are your deficiencies? Overwhelmingly, most of the answers were rent.
Because most of the businesses, that's their major, I mean, that's their major overhead, rental, you know, rent.
Rent and salaries.
Uh, but I mean, if, if that's something that, that you would like to formalize, in a sense.
By rental assistance, that would be like the grant, right? Option one.
Right.
Okay.
We, I mean, we, we, we definitely can. Uh, we sent out a survey, uh, was, I think it was back in December. And we got a pretty good response from, from the population, we can try to attempt this at, at the business level this time.
And did you, did you, uh, throw out that information about the voucher program to any of the businesses in those conversations? Or what kind of feedback did you get on that?
So on the voucher, this one is actually an idea more recent, uh, the conversations that we've had with the businesses. Yeah, we actually began, began back in, I want to say maybe March, towards the end of March when we started getting the calls. The, the voucher system is, is fairly new, about, I want to say maybe two weeks, about two weeks maybe.
What action do we need to take on this, or is it just a discussion?
No.
No, we need to make.
I mean, it could be action or it could just let them do the survey or do something. Try to come up with the plans on how, I mean, it's still not set in stone. You don't have the language on how it's going to be done. My understanding is, do you have everything drawn out, specific how it's going to be?
Again, just based on, on whatever option, we would, we would start discussing the details of.
And does, would it, could it be like, is it option one and three?
It can be, yes, it can be a mix of different options, yes. The, the, I, I don't know if you guys recall, but during the original conversation.
I think you should come up with a plan for all three of them.
Yeah, we discussed during the last session.
We really need to pull the trigger on something soon.
I'll, I'll, I'll make, I'll make a, a motion. I'll make a motion to, to approve option one, uh, business assistant grant. And option three, the rental assistance for individuals. And then you would decide how to split that, right?
Was it the way y'all proposed the three one?
What we could do, once we have direction, because we can open an application period, you know, pretty fast. Um, but.
A simple application period.
But we could come back with the actual rules and you can formalize those rules. But at least we have the direction on what rules to, to create. I think that's, that's doable.
Okay, I'll second Mr. Salinas's motion.
So we have a motion by Mr. Salinas and Councilman Salinas seconded by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion? Well, I'm just going to throw out there, I think we're losing an opportunity to help bring people into businesses. And for us to shut down the doors without even having the plans on any of them, specific guidelines, I think it's a mistake. I think we really need to be looking at all three of them. I understand your concern, Jesse. I, I just don't see it like you do. Um, in conversations with Mark Rodriguez, uh, we're trying to get as much information from other communities. When I showed that, and that Mark Rodriguez, by the way, is our, is our lobbyist, our lobbyist, I forgot the word. But, I mean, even he's applauding that type of plan. And look, all three of them can help out every, anybody. Is it going to help out everybody? No. But I really think if you're going to get people into businesses, and that's what's happening right now, people aren't going into businesses. You know, and it's going to come a time where people are going to feel comfortable to get out. I mean, I'm already feeling comfortable going to restaurants, I know not everybody is. I don't know if all of you have gone to restaurants here yet, I have. And I mean, it's not nowhere near even twenty-five percent, you know, the ones I've been to. And they're open to fifty percent. Locally, we have not gone up to seventy-five percent because we continue to have, you know, ten, you know, each week or more. So, uh, and really, the, the way the governor said, any community that has had more than ten, period, cannot open up to seventy-five percent. So we're still at fifty percent on all our businesses, even the restaurants, but they're not there. And so when we're losing out on opportunity, I mean, why do businesses give coupons? Why do businesses give you vouchers, you know, bucks or whatever you want to call it? Because they're trying to get you into the door, they're trying to get you into their door. They know very well that you're going to spend more than those bucks they're going to give you, okay? And that's why not even considering it is, to me, it, it, we're losing an opportunity to help businesses even more. Than just giving them a grant. We're missing an opportunity to get people in there. So quite honestly, you know, I think we have to have all three of them in there and keep working on the plan, as Ramon said. You know, show me a plan. I mean, we've already mentioned a couple of ideas. I mean, so we can continue exploring them and, and look for ways to make it happen. Is it going to be fair at the end of the day? No, because not everybody's going to get it. Not every business is going to get it. Not every person that's behind in their rent is going to get the rental assistance. So how can we maximize it? We need to be able to offer all these incentives at once. So I, for one, will not vote for just throwing number two out. I think the council should really consider all three if they really want to look at what is the best way to spread this around to everybody. Because one and three, that's going to help out a few. As, as well, one, two and three, or two by itself, you can't help everybody, okay? So I would ask the council to reconsider that motion and really push to go for all three. And come up with plans because several plans have been made, even on the voucher system. And when, when you express your concerns, Jess, I don't think it's something that you have to worry about. Because at the end of the day, the businesses, if they're willing to give the voucher, then that's to give out to the people. What we got to keep track of is who do we give the money to? We're going to give it to the business. We're not going to give the money directly to the people. We're going to give the money, the vouchers to the people based on the businesses, what they give as vouchers. And that's where, even Mark said, I don't think you have to account for that. But, you know, we got to keep looking for a way to get it done and to make it part of the program. Because one, that's an easy thing to do. That is an easy thing to do. But you're not going to guarantee people are going to go into their store. And I don't know if that's what some people are having a hard time understanding. But that's going to get people into the door, maybe not everybody, and yet they're still going to get the money. They're still going to get the grant and they're going to be evaluated the same way as number one, I would think, okay? So I would ask the council to reconsider and, and putting all three of them. And if, you know, because I, I think losing out on that number two, you're losing out an opportunity for businesses to get people in their doors. And that's what we need right now. We need business, people in the businesses to go and claim the voucher and spend a little more. Because that's really what's going to happen.
I reiterate my, my motion just for the fact that I, I believe option one and option three will help people that lost, businesses especially. That lost money, it'll help them now and we need to move on this, this money has to be used. Like, uh, Jesse said before December thirty-first. This, this is a way of helping businesses without forcing them to give us something in return. So again, I stand by the motion.
So you're, you're saying option two doesn't help businesses?
Can I make a comment? Uh, my concern, let me ask you a question, by, if you're saying to put all three options in, is that giving them the idea? is that giving them the idea that they can either apply for a business grant with no voucher? Or one with a voucher? Or are we gonna do one or the other? That's.
No, I, I think this just, this is just to keep it alive.
I'm okay with offering people the choice. I just, I personally do not feel comfortable putting that caveat of, uh, you know, dangling the carrot and saying, you have to give me twenty-five percent back for me to give you basically seventy-five percent. I mean, even though they're still gonna get the sale, and I, I agree with you about, you give them a voucher theoretically, and hopefully they will go and patronize a business and spend more. I agree one hundred percent with that statement, I just don't wanna hold that over their head. If that's what the program that they want to apply for, then I'm out for it. I don't have a problem with it. I just don't want it to be a, you have to do this. Give them a choice. Give the business a cho, a choice, because different businesses run differently, so it's like, you know, my business and your business are two different type of businesses, you know what I mean? Versus someone that's a food establishment, you know, a five dollar voucher would do a wonder for them, it won't do wonders for me. Or maybe, you know what I mean? I mean, I'm not saying me personally, but I'm just saying, business A, B, and C, let me, I'm not trying to say myself, cause I'm not applying. But it's, you know.
Mr. Davis, I think at, at the end of all this, I think all of us are failing to understand what Jesse is trying to tell us. And I think it goes back to, we need to, he's hoping that we read between the lines, and I don't think we're reading between the lines. I, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Jesse, please. Um, I think what he's saying is, this is, uh, money that was given to the city to be used for a certain purpose. I think going with number two, it's kinda like finding a loophole to do, be doing something that we're really not supposed to be doing. Because going back to what he said, you know, all this needs to be clear, transparent. We need to make sure that what we're doing is, I guess, for lack of a better word, legal. And, you know, going to give vouchers just, you know, like this, I don't think that's legal per se. And I think that's what Jesse's trying to tell us, and he doesn't wanna tell us straight up. He's hoping that we read between the lines, and we're not reading between his lines. And I think that's unfair for him, and for him, and for anybody else that's here in administration. You know? We can't just say, oh, you know what, federal government gave us, uh, one point four million dollars and four hundred of those, we're gonna use them to give out large. We can't do that. Jesse, please correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't mind you correcting me if I'm wrong.
You see, and the, the issue with, with, I would have personally, is that it needs to be a structured program. Whatever decision the council makes, it needs to be a structure. How does a person get it? How do they qualify?
Right.
As long as it's written, then that's, that will appease me. What I would have an issue with is, oh, let's get vouchers and then we'll distribute them. Because that's not, that doesn't, isn't detailed enough for us to how we're gonna comply and how we're gonna make sure people get them. So, again, if there was an actual firm plan, and I, and I know we've discussed several, we've talked about WIC, we've talked about having other agencies, we've talked about having our own website, have them. So, it just depends on what, uh, council would expect our, our contribution to this to be. Because ideally, like right now, where we have several employees furloughed, or all the departments are pretty much working, you know, very short-staffed. You know, we could potentially get more, uh, employees, maybe through the workforce center to help with this. So, I'm not saying that there's no way of doing it, it's just, in order to get money out, you know, and in order to make sure all the Ts are crossed and Is are added, that would be our recommendation. Ultimately, it's up to council to decide, and we're gonna comply with whatever council's wishes are, we're gonna make it happen. But, you know, based on where we are right now, you know, we're, it's, that's why it would be our recommendation. Just to make sure that we do comply, that everything is clean, everything is clear-cut with it. But ultimately, it's up to council, and council, we'll do whatever council's.
I think, I think really, you know, in reality, it's still gonna take one, two, three months to four months, you know? We help the businesses out with, you know, rent, number three, you know? I think it's helping the business stay open in the future, you know? We're gonna have to see, because a lot of businesses are still gonna close, you know? I mean, unfortunately, that's just, we can't help that. We're trying as much as we can to be able to help them out. And so, you know, we help them a mo, a month, three months, while all this goes away. And we hopefully pick up and, and just take from there. You know, I think we're doing a lot for our community, just even just doing that, you know? Trying to keep the businesses in place, you know, I, I.
And I, and I'll just say it for the record, this, what we're proposing on the vouchers is not illegal. Okay? And I can tell you that, because the direction given was, come up with your plan. There's no specific guidelines on what you can do and cannot do. I think we all know what we cannot do. We can't just go pick a compactor and give them two hundred thousand. Okay? That we can't do.
Or vouchers.
But, no, the vouchers, that, that's not illegal. That's not illegal, and you're right, I'm not, we're not gonna go give it to a compactor either. There's gotta be a way, and just like you're doing applications, and it was mentioned earlier on, you could do applications on the vouchers too. There's several ways to go about the vouchers. And it's all legal, because as long as the plan indicates that's how we're gonna do it, the state is okay with that. There, questions have been going around, and there's no specific guidelines other than, hey, use it the best way you can to help out your community.
But there's gotta be some kind of structure.
Yeah.
That's what he's trying to tell us, that's what he's telling us.
And it can be done.
Just gonna go back to a point that, that I made earlier. Uh, the voucher system adds that level of complexity, and, uh, as Mr. Mayor Davis said, Mayor Proten, I apologize. So, it is that, um, when we look at the businesses, we're, I think we're, we're kinda wrapping our heads with, uh, with grocery stores and gyms and stuff like that. But there are other businesses that were affected, so when we're talking about the voucher system, and this is what I mean by the complexity component of it, is that, you know, let's say, for example, an accounting firm, uh, needs assistance. Um, if we talk about the voucher system, uh, we may not have the same, uh, demand for a voucher on an accounting firm as we may have, uh, you know, for, for a, uh, for a grocery store. That's the complexity that, that I'm talking about as far as, you know, determining who gets the voucher.
Exactly.
And I think that's precisely the concern here.
It's gonna be the same as a rental.
Exactly. Now.
So, anyways, we can stay here for, we have a motion in a second, I mean, let's just.
Vote on it.
Vote, and the majority wins, you know? I mean.
Mayor, if I, if I may, council, you have a motion on the floor.
Yep.
You, my recommendation is, uh, if you're done, closed, you can take a vote. And it does not preclude any other council member from, if they wish, to also have a second motion to bring, let's say, if option number three is what you would like, to see if somebody will second it, and you can have a discussion and then take a vote on that also. Right now, the motion on the floor is for one and three, options one and three. You should go to vote, and then you can always vote again on whether somebody wants option two.
Thank you. All right, so there is a motion on the floor for one and three, and the second by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Those in favor, please raise your right hand. I'll abstain, because I really think we're losing out on an opportunity to get people into businesses. The grant business voucher, would have done the same thing, but it would have gotten people into their businesses, and that's what people need right now. I, I just. So, the motion passes. So, y'all got, still work on a plan? All right? All right, moving on to item number three. Consideration possible for the resolution of City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, authorizing the Friends of Eagle Pass, Inc. to manage the Fourth of July event. But I think on this one, after much discussion and the concerns and the legalities of, of the event and, um, possible repercussions to the city, um, I believe the, we're tabling it, or we're authorizing, uh, administration to move forward with a celebration just with a fireworks display? Is that?
Yes, the, the, the resolution will be tabled.
The resolution will be tabled?
Yes.
All right. So, after much discussion, uh, yes, we're tabling item, is there a motion to table item number three?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Councilman Salinas.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Uh, once again, and, and much discussion on the concerns of the large gatherings, especially in, in light of the increases on COVID nineteen in our community and really across the state. Uh, and listening to, to Governor Abbott today, uh, yes, we've seen the highest increase of positive cases, uh, this past week. And no doubt, it's large part due to, uh, opening up Texas. I will say that the increase we saw over the weekend was attributed basically to three families. And, and once again, we ask people to take the simple precautions of avoiding contact with others. Uh, we know it's hard not to visit family, friends, but that is where we're seeing overwhelmingly the majority of our cases in our community. It's people that are getting together with, in family members, uh, that are asymptomatic. And then somebody has a symptom and they test positive, and then, you know, the majority of the family goes test, and, and a lot of them are coming back positive. So, um, as a result, uh, Fourth of July event will be limited strictly to the firework display. Uh, we will not have the music, we will, that's it, right? Just the.
Yes.
The fireworks. So, there's a motion and a second. Um, any other discussion on it? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Item number six.
Item number six. On discussion, possible action on section twenty-six dash one-three-eight pertaining to parking meter fees for downtown. I believe council's wishes to table this item also, uh, as there was a lot of concerns on how we can do that without getting people to be parked down there and, and, uh, take advantage of the free parking. So, wishes of council is to table this item. Does it need a motion?
To a motion.
Motion made by Mayor Proten Davis, second by Councilman Vialpando. No further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Tabled. Item number seven. Discussion and possible action on five point, section five point three pertaining to consumption of alcoholic beverages on premises owned or operated by the city. I believe we're here, we're directing administration to reward, work on the ordinance. And the wishes of the council is for the discretion to be upon the city manager rather than the director. So, that's something that we could be seeing in the next meeting on rewarding the, updating the ordinance.
And more specifically, mayor and council, we're talking about parks.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make, make that note.
Yes.
Clear.
In the Fort Duncan area.
Well, I think all parks.
Well, all parks.
All parks.
All parks.
All parks.
And that'll be at the discretion. You know, moving the ordinance, hopefully to discretion, the city manager over the directors. And of course, we'll have to go through three readings on that one, once we bring it up. And, and that can be modified as we go through on what we think is best for our community. So, do we have a motion? Motion made by Mayor Proten Davis.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. All right, executive sessions, item number eight. Executive session pursuant to section five-five-one point zero-seven-one and five-five-one point zero-seven-two, chapter five-five-one. Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney and deliberation about real property regarding the donation agreement with Week One Associates, LTD, and amendment number one, and possible action in open session regarding same. So, right here, just, uh, everybody got a copy of the agreement. Uh, we're very happy to report that they have started the work on the road and on the waterline. And as Vanessa mentioned, I believe we'll have a, they'll have the quote on our section of the road that they will also, the WICO company will also be, uh, constructing. So, is there a motion to approve that agreement?
Second.
Or ratify it? Is it ratification of the agreement or approve it?
Ratifying.
It's ratified, cause we already moved, yeah. So, so it's to ratify the agreement? The motion was made by?
Mr. Davis.
Mayor Proten Davis.
Second by.
Second by Councilman Salinas.
Okay, just one question on that, mayor. So then, because it changed, and this is just ignorance on my part, I don't know, because it changed, we don't have to go through the process of bidding process or anything?
No, cause they're doing it.
The only thing we're gonna bid now is the detention pond, the.
So, this is the agreement with the landowner slash developer. So, they're, they're not building the road themselves, they're the developer. It's basically like when we have a subdivision.
Okay.
They're agreeing.
So, they're doing it, we're not doing it.
They're going to do it, but we're contributing financially to the project.
Okay.
So, it's not a bid it out type project. It's part of the donation for the, for the sports complex.
So, if they're doing it, we're not responsible for it, okay?
Now, what is left there? Just a detention pond and drainage?
Yes, the drainage channel.
That should be goo, is that being bid?
That goes out this Sunday.
It goes out on Sunday?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's the drainage channel that goes between the sports complex and West Lakes, and then the detention pond that is at the far end of West Lakes. That the city, that, that's what we're gonna bid out, and we'll bring that to council for award, probably in about a month.
So, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Number nine, executive session pursuant to sections five-five-one point zero-seven-one and five-five-one point zero-seven-four, chapter five-five-one. Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney and discussion of personnel matters regarding the use of an emergency contingency plan for the City of Eagle Pass operations, and possible action in open session regarding same.
Uh, mayor, council, uh, with the last approval that the city council gave for the emergency contingency plan for city employees, the council approved the extension of vacation hours, because vacation hours do expire after one year. But because of COVIDs on, uh, employees, some employees weren't allowed to take vacation. Um, so, what we're proposing is that anybody who had hours that were gonna expire between, uh, March twenty-third and September thirtieth, they would get one additional year to take their vacation, so they would not lose it. But, that amount is not payable. They cannot cash out if they resign or they leave the city. Um, so that way financially, this doesn't become a burden to the city, but the employee still gets to take their vacation at a later time, because we did not allow them to.
The recommendation is to allow the extension?
Correct.
Is there a motion? Motion made by Mayor Proten Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon. You okay?
Yes, uh, yeah, yeah, I need to take a break.
It's got a little warm, I think they turned up.
Yes, yes.
They see too much.
Don't make it too comfortable.
Any other, any further discussion? And I'm being to take it to a vote, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number ten. Executive session pursuant to sections five-five-one point zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding urban development action grant loan program and possible action in open session regarding same.
Yes, so about eighteen months ago, the city council approved a amendment to the loan program for the urban development action, uh, loan program. Uh, basically, the council took action to allow individuals who made payments for that payment to go straight to principal, pretty much forgiving interest. But it had a, a requirement that they had to pay it in full by May twenty-twenty. Because of COVID, we have received some requests for extension, because those individuals weren't able to make payments the last few months, and therefore, under the current rules, all that interest that had been forgiven now comes back. And so, because of the situation, we do wanna give them an additional year through May twenty-twenty-one to again make principal-only payments. If they do not make, if they do not pay their loan in full, then that interest does come back, so they will have to pay it. These individuals do have liens on their property, um, so that amount still has to be paid at some point. But what we wanna do is to entice individuals who have these loans to take advantage of this and pay those loans off now. So, that's a recommendation to extend one year, the interest rate.
Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon. Second by Councilman Vialpando. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Executive, number eleven, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation regarding the city's status as a party in the SMRD. regarding the city's status as a party in the SMRD docket number C17 dash 009 dash SC dash 42 dash C, and possible action in open session regarding same.
Mayor, this is Eddie. If, if I may, just as, uh, I, uh, brief you all on the executive session, this is an administrative proceeding that is taking place at the Texas Railroad Commission. There are a number of parties involved, including Maverick County, the Texas Rural Legal League, the City of Eagle Pass, and some individuals, that the defendant is, or the plaintiff is in this matter. Uh, we are recommending that you authorize administration and legal to proceed forward with negotiations with the defendant based on the executive session discussions that we had, and also authorize administration to sign, um, any proposed agreement that administration feels is reasonable in light of the discussions and the direction that has been given to us in executive session.
Is there a motion?
Moved.
Motion made by Mayor, uh, Councilwoman Ramon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Salinas. Any further discussion? And all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Last item. Did we miss anything?
No.
We got them?
Yes.
Last item.
Ramon.
Kingano.
Ramon.
Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon, second by Councilman Salinas. No further discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Meeting adjourned, 10:05 PM, July 16, 2020.